Okay. Talk loudly.
Do we have those still out there? They want to stay out there. Amina, are you guys okay out there? There's a little fireplace hole right here too, you guys could look through.
Excellent. Alright, everyone online can hear us.
That's what they complained.
Okay. Fabulous. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're so excited for this turnout. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna start off, Billy's gonna say a few words, and then I'm gonna explain what this process looks like.
Billy, get it up by yourself.
Yeah, who are you?
Who the heck am I? Just some random person up here talking, that's awesome. I'm Nicole, I'm with the BOT, okay?
Oh.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what that is?
The Board of Trustees, yes. So your elected governing body for Netherland. So again, after Mayor Billy says a few words about what the intent, the goal, what we're here for, I'm gonna talk through what the process is going to look like, because like I said, it's gonna be a little bit different than some of our work sessions or some of our BOT meetings. Cool? Okay, Mayor Billy, you have to speak loud, so the folks online can hear us.
Alright.
Hey, everyone, I'm Billy Giblin, about on the middle, but I'm Billy Giblin, and just wanna welcome everyone here today. I know this meeting is a surprise, and came up unexpectedly without a lot of notice, and it's out of the ordinary, being at 3:00 PM when a lot of people, including myself, are usually working, and in a place we don't generally have BOT get-togethers. And nonetheless, this is a very important first meeting. Our initial idea with it was it was gonna be a very small meeting with Jesse, and Ron, and our lawyer, Miranda, and one, and then another trustee. About a week plus ago, and the third got too few too many chiefs in the cooks in the kitchen, and things went off the tracks, and it started shaping up to be a meeting that I didn't have in mind. So we read it enough to make it an open meeting. I'm glad people are here, I'm glad we're making it live. I do want transparency, as much as it didn't look like it this time around, in our BOT, and in my, specifically that I can control the most. And so I'm happy that we have the attendance we have, and hopefully, you know, more of it. This will also be, it's being livestreamed, it'll be recorded, tell folks to watch it if you'd like. So that, I wanted to say all that first, and then I do think, you know, it's, I wouldn't have asked to be mayor right now if I could have waved the magic wand and known everything that was going, but at the same time, I'm, you know, I'm embracing it in a big way, and feel like I'm a good person to be. You know, I feel also like privileged, and also, like, as luck have it, like, it's a good opportunity for me to be part of this, so, um, I, um... We are at an impasse, you know, this has been an ongoing, you know, dynamic since, for a long time, of just different sides of, you know, many, many issues in town, including downtown development, and, and it's kinda hit ahead with some things, you know, between the moratorium, and, you know, things that are going through our legislative process, legislative process, and then, you know, availability of parking, nonavailability of parking, I feel like it's kinda hit a point, it's a big opportunity for us, and one thing, we wanted to come out of the original idea of the meeting, and this meeting as well, it's like, it's the beginning of a conversation, and it's bringing folks together, we're just at a point where we gotta make something work, and be able to move forward in some constructive way, and so, it's, um... I would argue, I mean, I was talking to someone the other night, I can't remember now, and, you know, it's like, you know, it's a very friendly board right now, I would say, to downtown development, and to Ron's plan. At the same, and, you know, and that can be good or bad, depending on how you look at it. It's also, because of that, the opportunity is, it's a board that can influence, and that we could maybe get it to work, that are really bringing in line any kind of development to be consistent with the plan, even visions 2030, and things that a lot more people waiting on, and so... It is the opportunity that's in front of us right now, whether we want it, want it or not. And so, these conversations, I am happy that we're starting them, and I think it's gonna be the first of many, and I hope they are productive, and, um, just one thing, and it said, you know, anything, the public are invited, and there will not be a chance for public comments, so that's true, and just, just so you know, so that's kinda precedent anyways, with the work sessions, which we often have on the second week, ever last two for years, on the second weekends of the month, public does not give comments, if I understand that correctly, so this is not...
Unless you call for it.
Unless, unless we, and I think in this situation, we likely won't, so I'm just, I'm just gonna say that, okay? And, but, but we want you to witness the conversation we're gonna have. For me, the big, you know, it's a chance to start talking together, to let Ron share this vision. I also want, you know, us to be talking about some of the things we have in place, be it moratorium, etc., you know, and, and we may or may, I don't know to what degree we'll get into those, but we wanna understand that these are tools that we may or are using to protect the town. The last thing, as trustees, we are elected, appointed, you gotta win, win it, win the majority of the board to be appointed, so you're elected as appointees too. You gotta, you're elected to make decisions to protect the health, safety, welfare of the town, and we gotta be always mindful to think of all of the town, not put any one interest, person, interest, entity, or part, group of people ahead of the whole welfare of the town, so that's something we all need to keep as our little compass, a compass as we proceed, um, and with that, I think there's everything I want to cover, let me just look and make sure my notes... And I guess, you know, to be honest, the last thing is, whatever happens in these two blocks is gonna have a massive influence, and will either dictate or incredibly influence our town, Netherland, you know, now and into the future, the nature of our town, the culture of our town. Yeah, so whatever happens there is a big deal, how we get there is maybe a bigger deal, so... That's, that's all I have to say right now.
Thanks, Billy. Again, my name is Nicole, I'm on the Board of Trustees, we have trustee Severs here today, we have trustee Corvallon, we have trustee Mountain, Mayor Billy, we have trustee Tom Mahal, hold, hold, sorry.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, um, and did I grab everyone? Yep, I can speak at more, absolutely, because we've got more folks in the library. Um, did I grab everyone? Okay, and then Mr. Ron Mitchell is here, and so those are the participants of the session. As Mayor Billy said, there isn't going to be public comment, however, I would say, take your notes, write down your questions, because there is likely going to be successive meetings possible, so please take notes, okay, and whatever we don't capture in this session, write us a letter, make sure to hit one of those next meetings, so that you can have, convey your viewpoint.
Yeah, and you could just send those notes to the, to the BOT in the email, if you want.
Yep. Okay, so to get started, so of the trustees and Ron, and for everyone else in the room, this is how the process is going to go. We're gonna start off first and articulate sort of our goal, like, kind of some ground rules, or some needs of the process, right? It's very easy, in a contentious situation, to just speak without listening or whatnot, and so we wanna create those behaviors that we find are important in having this conversation. So that's gonna be step one of the process. After that, we're going to listen to Ron's plan, and Ron's gonna have about 30 to 40 minutes of uninterrupted time, where he can just speak. None of the trustees, nobody gets to interrupt, nobody gets to ask questions, that will come at a later time, okay? So Ron gets 30 to 40 minutes of uninterrupted time, got it? Alright, after that, then we can go into clarification, so that's where the Board of Trustees can ask clarifying questions. Hey, Ron, could you clarify at this point or that point? Alright, so we'll offer about 10 minutes of that clarification. After that, we're gonna go into the board's perspective of what works, we'll have about 20 minutes to give that. Then we'll have about 20 minutes of, hmm, these are some concerns. After that, Ron has the ability to provide, and I believe it's about 10 minutes, of any concerns that pop up, he'll have the opportunity to clarify some of those. So when it's going through what works and the concerns, there's also, we stay in those sessions. We get through all of the positive things and what works, we go to the concerns, there is no, there's discussion, but there's not necessarily a back and forth, there's no rebuttal, we're just capturing the concerns, and then after that, Ron has the ability to clarify. Board of Trustees, is there any questions about the process? Okay? Alright, so before we get started, let's articulate what some of those needs, and is everybody praying you can still hear me better? Okay, awesome. What the needs or what the behaviors are that you need to see in order to make this a positive, productive conversation? What are some of those things? I'm looking at our Board of Trustees. Let's see, you wanna start us off?
Oh, interrupting?
Okay, so, can you position it in the behavior you want to see?
Alright, yeah. Respectfully, wait for the person to finish talking.
Okay, wait for the person to finish. Wait, okay, recognize, you do not have spell check or grammar check, okay? So just bear with me, wait for person to finish speaking. Okay, what else?
Say only, speak only truths and facts, as much as possible, and not just opinions and speculations.
Okay, so speak truth, sort of leave out the speculation?
Controversial speculations, yeah.
Okay.
For drama.
No, no drama, leave out the drama. What else? And Ron, you can participate in this as well, because you're a participant, what do you, what would you like to see?
Gonna think for a minute.
You're gonna think for a minute, I'll come back to you. Yes, Mayor Billy?
I have one, I'm trying to figure out how to flip it to make it a positive statement, but, um... Give me one second to word it better.
Okay. Yes, state it in the behavior that you wanna see, if you tell someone not to do something, it's kinda like, you don't tell them what exactly it is that you want them to do. Yes.
The beginning of consensus.
The beginning of consensus, so what is that?
That we're moving, moving in a common direction with a common fact set in some, the majority seems a lot.
Okay, so we're moving toward, I don't wanna butcher your words, but moving, moving toward common consensus, is that?
Alignment.
Was that?
Alignment.
Seek alignment.
Seek alignment?
Yeah.
Okay. What else? Yes, Ron?
As the process goes, study outside of the meeting, and for instance, I have all of the books I've read here, and maybe some of you would like to look at those, please don't take them, to educate yourself as to what the town really needs and really wants.
Okay, so study outside the meeting, I think that's perfectly fine, a request, what else? You gonna say something? Go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say...
Okay, go Billy.
We just do like a plus minus column, so that we can capture maybe parallels that people want, everybody across the board, majority-wise wants, such as sidewalks, you know, egress paths for ADA accessibility, those sorts of things, and then minuses, such as, you know, building height and those sorts of things, so that we can sort of like build a viable...
So we'll go through the pros and we'll go through the cons, so if you want a plus and a minus up there, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
And it'll be in respect to the, what Ron presents, is that...
We'll kinda have a whole section of pro, of saying, this is what we see that works, and then later we'll have a section of, these are our concerns.
Yep.
Concerns are on the...
So is there, is there a specific behavior that you wanted to see?
So maybe just made, a side-by-side comparison would be really nice, that way it's sort of, there's an, there's an ease of reference or referability for people, maybe have missed this, to kind of...
Yeah.
... parallels quickly.
Excellent, yep, because we're also gonna be writing it up on the, but we'll have a written record. Of plus and minus. What else? Yes, Mayor Billy?
So, I'll just say, if you help me, respect the process by not making commitments or promises.
Okay.
Even though we're working to alignment, we need, respect the process.
Okay, so be open and flexible and respect the process?
Be open and flexible and don't make up your mind. Again, all I'm saying is don't, but, one of the deals, no promises, no compromises, and that's, Ron doesn't, and I ask him for him to promise something.
Okay, and let's not make promises, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Not make promises. Hey, cool, what else? What else?
Do you have any?
Yeah, I'd like us to be curious. It's you, Austin. And there's another one that I'd asked, this is, it's kinda the same, this is the one that always gets put up on here, right? But there's a reason why it gets put up on here, what's that?
Oh, he said explore.
Oh, yeah, be curious, explore. There's another one I wanna set up here. Sometimes it's really hard, in these situations, to actually just listen, and I would ask that we all try that, listen to what's being said, listen to what's, let's not assume intense perhaps, right? Because I think that that's kinda gets wily sometimes, like, they're doing it just because or whatnot, but listen and be curious, and let's explore, I like that. What else? Anything else? Board of Trustees? Ron, anything else? Did you say something? No, right. Okay. One, twice? Okay, so now what we'll do is, we're gonna go into about a half an hour, 40 minutes or so, of uninterrupted time for Ron to convey his, some of his ideas, and so, Ron?
Thank you very much, I wanna thank the board for this opportunity, I appreciate it very much. This is the first time in three decades I've ever been invited by a board to give a presentation, I appreciate that. I would like to tell you a little bit about who I am, my background, and why I'm here. I came first to Netherland in 1954 as a child. My parents brought me here on a trip, and I fell in love with town. Then I went to college as an engineering student in Boulder, and engineering students had to take at least one, at that time, one arts and science course or business course, to be more rounded. So my sophomore year, I took a course in real estate appraisal, was taught by an incredibly smart man who was famous, and his book was used in most universities at the time, as far as real estate development, how to handle real estate, and so I became very interested in it. And the end of the course, each, the class was 25 students, all the students had to go to one town or another, so we formed five groups. One went to Erie, one went to Longmont, one went to Lewisville, and our group went to Netherland. And this was a term paper where we had to do what was called a blight analysis. And a blight analysis is something that governments and private entities do to find out whether or not redevelopment is really something that should be, how it should be done, why it should be done, and it's a precursor, many times, to urban renewal authorities taking charge of their own destiny and condemning property. It's done by various different banks, obviously, will do this, if they're being approached to fund a redevelopment, they will want a blight study, and a blight study basically says and justifies redevelopment. Our conclusion in 1959 was that Netherland was blighted, needed redevelopment, and we got an A on the paper. And on the side, I was running a business as a student to get my way through, work my way through college, ironically, running refrigerators in the dormitory, and so I would come to class sometimes pretty greasy and dirty, but yet, the, I was appreciated by the faculty because I was working, trying to run a business. And the professor said, Ron pulled me to the side and said, "You should invest in Netherland, because this is going to someday be a very economically viable, booming town, and with the way the traffic and the roads are structured, there will be so much traffic, the town won't be able to handle it." I took his advice, so over a period of 75 years, I have been buying property in Netherland and assembling it for redevelopment. I'm going to hand out a brochure to everyone, and you'll probably have to share it, and the honest, I think I have enough, but I wanna make sure, and I hope, I would like you to follow me and not turn the pages and fill I ask you to, so that we can all be, just coined a phrase, on the same page. So in doing this, I've very carefully tried to study and analyze and work with consultants, with people who are a lot smarter than I am in terms of redevelopment, and these are their books right here. And many of them have come to town and given Netherland advice and opportunities and help. But unfortunately, Netherland has never listened to any of these people. I think it's time that you did, I think it's time that everybody took a hard look at where we are now and where we've been. When I came here in 1954, I think it was, I said, uh, 1919 was a dirt road, it was much harder to travel now, but it was a lot of fun, it's still a lot of fun. But I've watched and seen many, many changes in Netherland during that period of time, some good, some not so good. So what I'm gonna do is hand out this brochure, and I'm gonna start with what I have learned from other people and from the public. I have held in the past, over the last 10 years, many public hearings, many analysis, many meetings called charrettes, where I presented things, and I've always been met with resistance, with roadblocks. So I'm an old man, I'm the oldest person in the room, I think, and I'm not gonna be here much longer. So if you wanna work with me, now is the time. So let me hand these out, I feel the public will share these.
Passing around.
How many did I give up? I had...
They're going.
Alright, well... Please, oh, he choked.
Yeah, he's got...
I have one more here.
Bring this back, when you're ready. Well, and, Ron, do you wanna bring this back a little bit, so we can let people...
Everybody have...
Sorry, there's not enough to go around, but... I'm gonna go over... So, and starting off, one of the things that any city planner will look at is the same thing. What are the needs of a given area? What, what does the community need? What will improve things to the point that you can entice a developer to do these things and improve the communities? I'm gonna start, I have written a few notes, but I'm gonna start with one thing I think we can all say, let's, Vid Vision First Street. How many of you been down First Street when there were huge trucks blocking traffic? How many of you tried to back out when those trucks were there? How many of you watched wheelchairs try to get down around First Street, pretty hard? And one of the things that came out from one of the consultants is, that we need an area for truck unloading, a truck lane, that's somewhere that doesn't do this, doesn't block up and create an entire congested street that is non-functional at that time. So if you look at the front of the brochure, and you look, there's two pictures, and this is not a big monolithic building, this is three buildings that have many facades and many different types of developments. Right in the center is what looks like a tunnel. Well, it's two things, it's a 750-foot-long breezeway or aisle or truck parking area, so that every truck that ever comes down First Street could pull in there and deliver not only product to what's on my property, but what's on everybody else's property, which gives free pedestrian access, with no trucks blocking, no cart, no... And that is, what I think is a good thing, I think that's a good planning idea. And then too, at the time I started this, and this has been in process, there's been many iterations of this brochure. Traffic in that period of time, in my lifetime, from 1954 till now, has probably tripled or maybe even quadrupled through the town, but we haven't added any place for parking, so one of the things that is paramount in this thing is to try to provide parking not only for this development, but for everybody else on the block on the south side. Good city planners try to look and think about the whole picture. And so as I bought properties and I assembled this, this is one of the things I wanna stress, I and many others, all of the people who came to these charrettes, these meetings, these town halls, and there were many of them, had and were given the idea of what's gonna work for everybody, not just this development. What can this development do to augment and help the economic community of Netherland? So there's designer, there's two levels of parking. Underground parking is very expensive, but we wanna keep the entire business community functioning and performing for us. So that is one of the solutions that I think is one of the needs that we have, more parking. How do you do it? Where do you do it? And these are the things that developer presents his ideas to a bank for approval, they ask these same questions. How are you gonna accommodate the customers? How are you gonna accommodate the employees? How will this function? Well, it's paramount to me that there's many things that are gonna happen in the future, or should happen in the future. At some point in time, this community needs a second bridge to go through the town, because if you don't have it, and something happens on the one bridge that we have, there'll be a lot of loss of life. And people don't start thinking about these things until after they happen. As long as I have been here, and I've probably been here longer than anybody else in the room, this has been a discussion, a subject of discussion. I'm now going to offer you the opportunity to do it, but you have to offer me something in return. And I don't think that that's an unreasonable thing to request or think about. This is a thinking session, not a, let's bitch at Ron Mitchell, because he owns a lot of property in town. I'd like to turn to page two. You'll see three or five, six yellow, yellow spots, so that you know what I own and what we're talking about. There are three yellow sections. So that you know what I own and what we're talking about, there are three yellow sections. These have been thought about and worked on, and one developed can work together harmoniously. Each has a function, each has something that can contribute to the redevelopment downtown in terms of housing, commerce, traffic, and uh, viability, walkability for the town. In terms of creating for the town, what I don't think you have, talk about the character of the town. But many of the authors of these books talk about creating a sense of place. Is it enjoyable? Do you really have a great uh, enjoyable time walking down First Street on either side right now? I don't. It's thin, it's narrow, uh, and it needs something. Well, what can I do? What can I do to help this uh, the community? What can a development do? One of the uh, consultants, and I think it was a guy named Dan Burden, who is the noted walkability expert in the, the country, he's nationally known, said, pull the building back twenty-five feet, create a space. And you, by doing this, you can create more space uh, for traffic. Uh, you can create little peninsulas of uh, picnic tables and areas for people to congregate and enjoy each other. So the zoning allows for you to build a building right to the property line. What First Street doesn't need is a canyon of buildings where people can't get in and out, where they can't really sort of recreate. So one of the major, and you see a green line on the biggest block, the central block. Uh, this is where the twenty-five foot would be, maybe it's thirty feet, who knows? What uh, people think and function are important to me and important to the town. And nothing in this document is cast in stone. This is a negotiable document. It's not something I don't think you can achieve by passing ordinance after ordinance on one on top of the other. I think we have to sit together, at least with your representatives, and try and figure out, does it work? Will it work or won't it? Do the consultants who come here and give you advice that you ignore ever come back? No, they don't. But they might, but I think it's worth looking. So I want you to know what I own. And it's on page two. And it's the work on these, and most of this has been known for a long time, except on the biggest block, which is number, number five or six, excuse me. Uh, that block was recently finished when I purchased the Pioneer Inn. That was two years ago. So that purchase, allowing the block to be complete, also allows for a parking garage to be built and function. And when I talk about parking garage and this sort of thing, uh, taken into account is the traffic pattern. What's gonna happen with traffic when you do build a bridge? Who will go and where will they go? How will they do it? Uh, you need to have really professional people look at this, and they have. But at this point, it's been not viable to do physically. It's been politically impossible to do because there hasn't been an opportunity for me to talk to somebody in an open meeting. Nobody gave me this opportunity before. And you're here to be a part of it, I hope. The mayor said it's an opportunity. I hope it's an opportunity for all of us. Go to page eighteen. Page eighteen shows the central block. And it's color-coded in the upper right-hand corner, or left-hand corner are the codes or what the colors mean. And you'll see right through the center of it is the parking aisle for trucks. But it's not that, that's from seven in the morning till eleven in the morning. Then it becomes a pedestrian walkway. It becomes a, another gathering place with interior of the property that isn't cluttering up the street. And you look just to the uh, east or to your right as you're looking, and there's some trees in the center. This is a courtyard. This is designed to try to contain events and noisy uh, parties, whatever is necessary with little art galleries around the center. Uh, doesn't have to be, but this was a concept that I've found. And a few years ago, some of you will probably remember, the Ubon Restaurant had an artist co-op in it called The Artist's Niche. And I learned two things from this experience. I learned that Netherlands has an incredible number of really fabulous artists. They don't have any place to exhibit their art in a commercial area where there's a lot of traffic. They can do it up in the community center, but uh, impulse buying consumers, uh, people who are working in that are on First Street. I get calls every day for people who want commercial areas, or almost every, not every day, but there is a huge demand for small uh, individualized, personalized businesses that could survive in a tourist economy. Netherlands is a tourist economy. The local people cannot support the businesses in this community throughout the year. They have to survive uh, during the spring and summer months. Right now, there's very little business in town. Even with the ski area, they don't really participate that much in shopping in downtown Netherlands. So on page eighteen, you'll see on the left-hand side is a hotel uh, and other shops and restaurants. And one of the plans of this is to try to construct things so that the people who are running business is here now can come back. Find a place to put them to where they can uh, survive and then maybe move back and fill this uh, this site. So uh, the opportunity in terms of creating a walkable community and creating a what the, all the people who are city planners call a census of place is what this is about. Uh, the orange or yellowish-orange things are uh, housing. Uh, and the various codes show what they are. Uh, and I don't wanna go into much more than this. But what I would like you to do is go back to page two, and I wanna explain what, how something like this would get built. Uh, I am currently going to make an application to build housing, workforce housing on item number three. That's right across the street here. That's eight and a half lots that are just uh, east of the RTD lot. And it's workforce housing, the most, and the biggest crime need here is for workforce housing. And then on uh, item number four is also another site for housing. Where possibly either one of these sites could have eighteen or twenty units. But one of the problems in terms of building housing is very simple. If you build a five-bedroom apartment, you can rent it for three thousand dollars a month. If you build a seven-hundred-square-foot studio, you can rent it for maybe a thousand or fifteen-hundred a month. However, to get water to both of those, you pay the same amount, fifty thousand dollars. So to build the housing that's needed, a developer is penalized incredibly. He's gotta pay the same amount of money to get an income of fifteen hundred dollars as he does to get an income of three thousand dollars. That kind of incentive in your town codes doesn't work. It won't work. Nobody's gonna do it. And you have to understand the economics of this, and there's a lot of economics in play, and it has to work for everybody. That is one single item that doesn't work well at all. Okay, uh, there's another site that could be housing. And I have to tell you, that's item number two, and uh.
Ron, you can't talk openly about that.
We can't talk, alright, let's talk about another site. I have for three decades allowed people to park free on my property. That was nice of me, but people got the idea that they were entitled to it, to park there forever. Well, guess what happened to me? The IRS came along and said, Mr. Mitchell, you're getting no income from these parking lots. And they're a separate business from your restaurants because you let everybody park there. If you just let your own restaurant customers park there and didn't let anybody else park there, why, we could say the parking lot belonged to the restaurant and the restaurant was paying rent and paid for the parking lot. But I didn't do that. I let everybody park there. So the IRS said, well, you can't take the expenses off of your income tax. We're not gonna let you do this. So I'm faced with supporting and paying the taxes for, and here's what my tenants say to me. Mr. Mitchell, why do you subsidize everybody else? And, and across the street, let them park free when our customers need to park there? I think that's a pretty legitimate uh, complaint from my tenants. So we have a parking problem that I think can be solved mutually. I don't really wanna go off on a tangent and do my own parking system and hire the same, or a company that the town doesn't hire. We need to collaborate. And we sit here, as the mayor said, at an impasse. Well, we're at an impasse because prior boards never offered and never uh, uh, gave me the opportunity to talk to the public in this manner. Well, Teresa here is sitting here shaking her head, and I'm, I'm going to address Teresa's concerns. In uh, item number two. Oh, sorry, we can't, let's just talk about item number four then.
Teresa has different concerns, that's okay, because right now it's your time to continue, and we're gonna listen.
I offer clarification when we can talk about number two. So Ron has a rezone application for a hundred First Street before the Board of Trustees, and it's a quasi-judicial matter. So that means that the Board of Trustees can't prejudge the application, which is why we can't engage in any discussion about number two. Welcome to come to the Board of Trustees meeting on February twenty-first at seven o'clock, if you'd like to give public comments.
But I'm gonna make this comment. The structure of meetings in terms of applying is faulty. Because when an applicant isn't given the opportunity to respond to somebody's questions and even questions of the board, and that's why this meeting is being structured differently. We have an opportunity to make a presentation, we can ask, and, and from it you can take your notes and you can ask questions. And I will stay after this meeting as long as anybody wants and talk to anybody who wants to talk to me, friend or foe. Okay, I'm open to discussion, no matter what your position is. But let's just take another parking lot, okay? I can't take the uh, 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 expenses off my income tax. That's a huge, it costs a lot of money. I have, somebody goes around these parking lots every day, picks up all the diapers that have been thrown out, all the dog manure that's in green bags that people just kinda throw around. This is how, and it has to be kept clean, it's constant battle. So uh, in terms of maintaining it, I have a big problem personally in, in this regard. So uh, unfortunately, can't talk about that particular parking lot. Uh, but let's talk about another parking lot that could have housing. And let's talk about the one I mentioned before. Uh, housing is the most critical need, but if, if a, this parking lot uh, happens to be in the CBD, so I can charge for parking there. But if that parking lot, number uh, three, was not there and was in a residential zone, I couldn't charge for parking there. So then I'd have to apply to change the zoning. But there are other solutions, but it wasn't allowed to respond. Maybe you could allow paid parking in residential zones. And then who knows uh, what that would be. But that particular, a particular parking lot that I can't discuss is vital to helping the downtown, and it's been free for six years. So of course, I'm frustrated.
I give you a time check, so you got about ten more, ten, fifteen more minutes.
Alright, that's fine. I am frustrated by the zoning laws and the things that conflict and the ability to get something done in terms of what the IRS says I can't do, what the town says I can't do. We, us, have to do something at some point in time. Now, I said I'm the oldest person here, I'm gonna be dead pretty soon. You have the opportunity to work with me or somebody else who buys it, it's that simple. See, what that professor didn't tell me when he said it would be a great economic opportunity, he didn't tell me it might not be in my lifetime. That's okay. I'd still like to see Netherlands come out on top. The, one of the things that this town needs, we, somebody told me we only have eleven children and uh, our kindergarten is accurate. Does anybody have a child in kindergarten?
It's yours to smell a year compared to the one above.
Well, if, if we don't get more children and places for young families to live, there won't be anybody in kindergarten. I mean, you have no idea the number of calls I get for housing I can't support. I have a list of ten people who paid deposits, who want the next place I have, and I quit taking calls from people. They paid deposits to get into whatever I happened to have, and there isn't any place and there isn't gonna be very soon. And there are people who have jobs and are desperate and wanna work in this town, they like the, the area. So that's something you really have to think about. I've thought hard about it too, and I thought, you know, how can we come to a, you know, why don't you let people park uh, and let people who are in residential, residential zones uh, uh, run out their front yard to park at an event? Why don't you let a developer who needs parking and needs to have some changes in the code have an opportunity, and I have it now, thank you, to present that. Unfortunately, I'm sorry we can't talk about that, uh, but I'll talk to you about it individually, or the general public afterwards and what, what has happened. Am I skirting too close?
You're walking a pretty fine line right now.
Alright, uh, so if you look at this book, and up on item number one, there was a preschool here at one time. And it functioned really well, and they finally were able to buy their own place. But if we have enough children in this community to fill the kindergarten, you're gonna need an infant care center, which is totally different than a preschool. And there are plenty of people in the Gilpin County area and in the immediate area of Netherlands who would bring their children there. But right now, we're in a, an environment economically where most young families have to have two wage earners to get by, just to get by. But they don't have any uh, licensed, regulated uh, childcare center, infant care center, where they know they can get competent care for their children. Not everybody has relatives and grandparents who could babysit for them. There are uh, people, I have two of them working for me right now, you know where they live? They live right across the street in that little house, and they work at a restaurant here. They're excellent employees, they're working their tails off, they're doing okay. But the mother desperately needs to be able to work and can't find childcare. And individual childcare is even more expensive, and we've got a labor shortage in this country right now, everywhere. One of the reasons I've heard that the grocery store might close, they can't get competent help. This is where the housing comes in and the need comes in, but there's a lot of problems to get it. And this is the first of, I hope, several meetings where people come, bring your ideas, bring your hopes and desires, and bring something that's productive. Don't just bitch at me because I own a lot of property, because I won't after I die. That's my presentation.
Alright, thank you, Ron. Just these, clarifying questions for Ron, based off the presentation debate, the need answered. Yes, Tom?
How many retail establishments are you envisioning being created in a space like this?
It depends on how it's designed and how, what the needs are and what the perceptions are. Uh, and what applications might occur. Uh, if a development is presented in a rough form, uh, you may get applications for space uh, that you would not normally, uh, uh, know. For, I'll give you an example. I have five dentists, excuse me, I have to turn this off. Uh, who would come, and each one of them take one day a week specialists, an orthodontist, a periodontist, a uh, an individual that makes uh, implants, a general dentist. Uh, I think this community, and they feel, could be supported. How much space do they want? I don't know, because they're not gonna commit until I can commit. The same is true with others. Is there artists that can commit? Or how about you have a space where an artist could come and pay fifty bucks for a weekend to exhibit all of their stuff? Nobody does that. Nobody does that in a where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. But there are very few artists in Netherlands that could afford to pay monthly rent for a shop or a studio. But they they're looking for an outlet. Okay, so I I mentioned the artist notes, and this is one way I would help the artists, provide them with individual spaces. But when the artist tried to run a co-op, I said, I found fabulous work with those people. But the other thing, the second thing I learned, first thing I learned is I said, there's a tremendous number of fabulous artists in this community. The second thing I learned, second thing I learned sadly, is they can't get along with each other, each other under any circumstances. They fight. They they're not business oriented. So I went to Sanofi and I studied the art galleries. I spent a week down there talking to art gallery owners and. And they're a whole different breed than the artists themselves. A gallery owner and someone who takes the art to sell it is a totally different person than the person who produces it, with a few exceptions. We have one here in town. She's French. She may open a gallery in a property that I have, I want her to, I'm begging her to. Because I'd like to see that community end up with a big presence in this, because it would be an economic draw. And the fact is, the business community, as I mentioned before, is reliant on the tourist dollars. It cannot survive and has never been able to survive. Even though it gets a lot of local support, it isn't enough to keep them in business. I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yep.
Yeah, because the question was how many retail spaces?
The answer is, I don't know, I'm guessing between 30 and 50.
Jesse?
Again, if things change, you have to be able to be flexible. Suppose no artists come on the weekend. And I've created 10 or 15 little, again, niches or 10 by 10 spaces that they can rent over the weekend. If they don't come, I have to find some of their use. So the use pattern has to be flexible.
How long would a project like this shut down the businesses in town?
I'm gonna repeat the question for the people online in here. The question was, how long will, time will it take? And are the businesses shut down in order for the project to finish?
Well, that depends on on a lot of things. So let me try to be as specific as I can. One of the aspects of moving the buildings back 25 feet is that 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 area can be used by contractors. Who are putting in lifts and and great big cranes and stuff and deliveries. It's an area that's been created new, that's horizontal with the street, so that you don't have to block off the street. But the street would definitely have to be closed for some period of time to put in the foundation. Because the foundation would go out to the property line, even though the building's on top of the parking lot, would be back 25 feet. My guess is, one full season, you would have most of the street closed, putting in the foundation. But it probably would take two years to construct it. But the housing all has to be built before the main part could be built. Because the workers are gonna come to erect something of this size for anybody, no matter what it is. Are gonna live in areas like Brighton and Arvada and Aurora, where there are skilled metalworkers and riveters and welders. Who will be working on steel girders and things like that. And the only practical way to do that would be have them come here and work four days a week, 10 hours a day and live here. Nobody is gonna want to drive up to Netherlands from Brighton and spend two hours getting here from Brighton and then work an eight hour day. They'd want to work a six hour day. So part of any larger development has to be, have a housing component. That will house the very highly skilled workers that are gonna come.
I think Conny, you had your next.
Oh, yeah, so assuming, you know. Assuming the moratorium ends, when are you ready to start building this?
So the question for those online is, if the moratorium were to end, when would Ron start building it? Because I mean.
Well, I have one project in the works right now. And the reason this project is in work right across the street here is the town has a grant to pay for sidewalks. And town has offered me the opportunity, if I will develop it, and correct me if I'm wrong, so they don't say anything wrong here. That they will pay for the sidewalk. I'm designing a building because there's strong west winds right in that area. And the reason they're stronger than most of the rest of the town is because it's right in line with the dam. And when the dam was built, that created a venturi for wind, which pulls the wind over the dam faster than it did before the dam was put there. So the sidewalk would be inside the building, it would be an interior walkway, not, go ahead.
Well, a couple of questions. Obviously, that's gonna require a lot of consolidation. Why did, why, why is that not the first lots consolidation that is gonna be occurring for the properties?
There's a whole bunch of reasons. First, it's not complex. There's a complete survey, there's no problems with the surveys. There, it's done, it's easy, there's, it would be, I think, far easier to do right at the same time. The lot consolidation on the other two lots is an entire mess. On Snyder Street, two subdivisions interact, they overlap. And they, and all, there's all kinds of surveys that are either wrong or they conflict with each other. So no bank, no title insurance company is going to ensure something that has that much of a mess. All right, there's a variety of personal reasons too. In terms of parking on those two parcels, the IRS has said, okay, since these are all separate lots for parking, you can't take it off. If it's one lot, then two things happen. First off, there's another thing that I'm going around circles here, but I'll stop and direct myself. The IRS has, IRS has told everybody who owns any property at all, not just me, that you have to account for all the income from a single property. And take off all the expenses, expenses from that property as an individual unit. I have a crew that goes around every day and maybe they change a lock here and they fix a tile on the floor here, they change a light bulb there. They pick up some trash, they do maybe 15 different little chores. And the IRS is saying, I have to account for each of those little chores they do and cost accounted. Meaning allocate to each one of those chores a cost. This is an incredible bookkeeping nightmare. So if all of those buildings are on one lot, all the expenses are on the one lot too.
Yeah, I understand that would make it easier, but so that to get. Initial answer answered, you would prefer or you will be doing something here first?
Yes.
And when do you anticipate beginning this project?
Well, this, which project?
Well, I guess the first street, second street project. The one that would have the most impact on the community.
Well, if this one gets it done and the housing is up and running. And I get the other one done on number four, after those two projects are done, I would.
Do you have the site plan ready for this one here and architectural designs?
I have, I have some work done and I've been working with the architect, it's not completed. I've got some drawings I could show you after the meeting in my office where we're working on it. And but it's it's not at all completed.
Is it like the one in the picture? It's got a bunch of pages.
Which page are you on?
Page 10.
Well, I had asked you not to do that, but I will, I will do it.
What's that?
I had asked that you only go to the pages that I designated. No, it does not look anything like what's on page two.
I guess, so I mean.
This was conceptual, not a rendering.
Something like that. Guess it would be about two years or so before you could be prepared to start there? Or would you be, would you need this first for the housing?
I really need this first for the housing. I also need number six for the housing too.
So that's later on?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not willing to take on two individual development first.
That makes it difficult to consolidate, sort of consolidation aspect. Something we need to be having for years, just for tax purposes.
What was that, the concerns, bring that up in concerns piece? I want to make sure, is there any other clarifying questions for Ron regarding the project?
And also, I want to add one more thing.
No, we need to stay on task so we had time to kind of.
Right, yeah, we're still, we're still good on time.
Are we still?
Yeah, we're still good on time.
I think I stopped early, did I not?
Yeah, you stopped early, so any other clarifying questions though? Yes, John?
I did have one. We spoke to the consultant last week, Tom, I think his name was. Are we allowed, can we bring what he said up in this meeting?
Not what was discussed in the quasi judicial or the executive session, you cannot bring that up.
Okay.
Anything that was discussed publicly can be addressed here.
Okay, then just like clarifying question, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's just, if you do consolidate those lots, the big consolidation I'm talking about between first and second street, Ron. What type of ability do you leave in place for the the unlikely event where you might want to piece that back off again in the future?
You just go through the same process. The title companies, the banks, want to see a clean drawing. Right across the street, Tanya, it's a clean drawing. On the triangular piece and the big piece, they're not clean, they're a mess. And these cause questions. And rather than trying to develop and get title insurance for a bunch of tiny little properties, some of which overlap, which don't make sense. You get one policy for one piece of property. That is a big enticement for investors and no developer does anything without having other investors. There's either banks or insurance companies or trust funds or retirement funds, all kinds of people who invest in projects like, projects like this for a long term return. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from the board? Billy, did you have a clarifying question?
No.
Okay, all right, so now we're gonna go into the spot or the, it's actually where we're gonna articulate, what are some. Positives or what are some things that we see that can really work with this plan? And again, in public, we're not doing public comment, I apologize and take your notes, ask your, jot down your questions. Because subsequent meetings will be able to address what you're talking about, okay? So what are some positives that you guys, the board sees with the plan, sorry, Tom, yeah, go for it. Okay, so you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, for sales tax revenues are somewhat flat. And it's retail dependent, the more jobs we have, the more sales tax we have. And the more attractive we are to town businesses.
Okay, so the more attractiveness of the town.
I think we're gonna need to have the Board of Trustees come closer on this speaker, or they're not gonna, I guess a lot to keep repeating.
When we, when we talk.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, when you talk some closer to the speaker, so that. Yeah, basically, Tom said economic vitality. And if you have any more to say, you can move closer, what else? What else, positive? Tanya, yep.
Increase parking and housing.
The woman said it to the point. Increased parking and housing. Okay, what else? Tom?
Safety.
Okay, so come over here and talk a little bit more about safeties, because what do you mean by that?
People, pedestrian safety, in particular.
Pedestrian safety?
Yeah.
Okay.
And a big note on that. ADA accessibility.
Okay. ADA accessibility. I think somebody, I think Ron, you had brought up the fact that sidewalks are non-existent downtown, right? It's very difficult to, and Ron, you can participate in this piece as well, because you're a part of this session. So ADA access, remember, you don't have spell check. I think I got it though. What else? Positive.
A removal of some of the blight in that downtown area.
So John says removal of the blights. What else? All right, Billy?
Truck lane, truck, trucking lane.
Having trucking lanes, trucking lanes, do you want to clarify?
Off street.
I wrote it down as trucking lanes.
Loading zones.
Okay, loading zones.
Off street.
Great, Tom?
Underground parking.
Underground parking, so coming back to what Tanya had said, in terms of parking, so you're.
Let's read on that.
You're, well, you're specifically calling out the fact that it's underground. Oh, yeah, sorry if it feels like I'm shouting at you all, since I want to plug some lines.
Interior courtyard for social gatherings, community events.
Interior courtyard for events, Jesse?
Something that's been planned.
Okay, there's some bits of thought to it. What else?
Resolution of lot lines that are, that don't make, no longer make any sense.
Okay, so we could resolve some lot lines that don't make sense. Like Ron had said, there's some overlap, that's a problem. And so getting that resolved. Okay, what else?
Ron said it early in the conversation, but that second bridge is a big deal again for safety.
Okay, yeah, safety and the second.
And traffic flow.
Okay. Let's put it as another item, you said traffic flow.
Yep.
Okay, Jesse, anything else? Looks like you got another one.
This is a potential, but I would, I think we, is integration with our biggest employer in the area, the ski area. I think we we have 10,000 cars a day going by and nobody can, nobody stops because there's no capacity. So integration with the ski area, I guess, would be the.
Integration with the ski area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Really?
This is both a plus and a concern is give.
Say your concerns for.
Okay, I'll say this later, give and take, compromise.
Give and take.
Positive and I'll be back soon and talk about.
Stay tuned for more.
See Tanya moving to the, go ahead.
Well, it's just to piggyback on what Tom said about Eldora, the hotel would probably get more tourists stopping. That the ski traffic tends to just drive by, so that might help build these businesses.
Tourists stopping to build business. Okay, anything else?
Increase in employee housing, in affordable housing.
Yes.
Mentioned that.
Yeah, we got increase in housing, but I'm gonna also do a little, and say affordable. What else?
Well, was it the infant care center, was that, is that in your plan or is just a possibility?
It isn't shown on this plan, it was shown on a prior plan. And this one does not show it, but I would say it right.
You would build something that would fit that.
That'd have to be last because it's an economic loser. But for the community, it's an economic gain. Because when kids start school together, it's a fact, particularly in kindergarten, first grade, parents don't like to pull them out. If all the kids end up going.
Well, they do, let me tell you, they are pulling out.
I know, what do we do to keep them in?
That's another conversation.
Yeah, but it's part of this one.
Sure, definitely, maybe more people.
So without making a promise, and to adhere to our ground rules, I'm gonna say childcare facility. Or infant care, question mark.
Yeah, potential, let me say potential.
Taking it up one level is family friendly town.
All right, like you're, you're just saying.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, families have kids, kids need a place to go to school and play. Yeah, I mean, yeah, families have kids, kids need a place to go to school and play, and mom and dad need a place to work.
Okay. So, yeah, putting parents out of work.
Yeah.
We all know that.
This is a bit of a question. If to at least build commercial in a big chunk like this, is there a potential offset of water fees to the residential, or at least increased water fees to the residential?
Something the board HSEs would have to talk about.
Standard question. So, it's, yeah, probably a tactic that we'd have to discuss later.
Okay, I just wanted.
Commercial.
Yeah, possibly exploding like a bullet point under economic vitality. Is there a potential for this commercial development to immediately offset some of the burden of expensive water for this town?
Then they would lower the fees for the residents.
Or potentially at least decrease that 5% per year, which will.
Oh, yeah.
Put me out of the town by retirement.
Okay, any other pluses? All right, Jesse, looks like you're going.
Yeah.
I already covered, but I guess, you know, doing something with downtown that's, it's in need of renovation, so.
I had a little bit of swish room there. Anything else? Tom?
I think we, I don't know how to, if we have, if this is doubling up, but I would like to see that we have a mechanism that makes this an appropriate town for people who want to invest their money and build a business here.
So attract investors?
Yeah.
With that category, is it okay? All right, BOT, anything else? Ron, anything else you got?
I feel this is the BOT's section.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so now, let me.
I could add one more thing.
Sure.
About just providing art spaces for artists, providing art creative spaces, which, I mean, we have some, but we could always use more, hopefully. If, if the economy allows it, it's all, we don't know.
Sure. All right, those are the pluses. Now let's get into some of our. And. Is this regarding everything we've talked about, or simply the developments?
It's not about, that we're not talking about our concerns regarding why we have the moratorium, it's, we're not talking about that, we're talking about this development.
The, the, yeah, what the presentation was, thanks for clarifying, yeah, what the presentation was today, what would potentially be some of the concerns? I have one. Yep, go for it.
Closing of First Street during the building, I don't know, many businesses won't bounce back from that.
Okay, so, and what I have here is the, the change. So this is the change symbol, so for what could be done differently, or something that we might have to think through, and so this.
The fear during the construction, even ones across the street are going to suffer, you know, obviously the ones that are buildings get torn down, they're out. I mean, that's another story, but the ones across the street who have nothing to do with this, I don't know how well that's going to happen and how well it's going to go.
Okay, yeah, and the concern is will they bounce back?
Right.
Is the concern.
Yeah, for there, for them, and for us.
Okay, great. Um, BOT, what are the other concerns? Billy, it looks like you're moving. Yep.
I'll just stick with the construction time for now. Having worked on, you know, before I was with ResNet, I was with Nexet, and we did a lot of energy efficiency consulting with developers throughout Utah, I was mostly working in Colorado, but I think looking at this and just knowing, you know, and all of us knowing the nature of downtown, you know, the, the concerns with the realities of construction time, it's really more like three to five years, especially in today's climate. I mean, back then, one to two years, I was super optimistic, and that was way before things have gotten as tight as they are. So I think, you know, from a, relate realities of construction, closing down, and making it hard on the adjacent businesses, and then, yeah, I mean, the only possible, the only thing to relieve it would be phased construction that puts people places in between.
Okay, so maybe, well, we won't, we won't, we won't try to solve it right now.
Yeah, okay, okay. Timeline and phased, phase, phasing.
Phased construction.
Okay, so, yeah, so there might be like some impact, overall impacts and preparations. Okay, Tanya, I see you moving.
Yeah, I, this is hard to put in a sentence, but I think after this gets built, there will be a before and after of Nederland that it will be like the death of the one that I know of, for better or for worse. And I think that is really concerning to a lot of people, because they like our town this way, not realizing maybe that a lot of these buildings need, need to have a lot of problems structurally. But regardless, it's going to change the face of our community forever. We're never, we're not going to look like a cute little mountain town anymore. We're going to be polished, we're going to look good. And is that, is that something, is that the look we want, is that, you know? And then, following up on that, when you have a big business like that with potentially only one landlord running it, it's nice to have different business owners, different landlords, different people that are invested in the community instead of just one person. So I guess this is almost a question, would these be divided up and sold like individually, kind of like a condo, or, I mean, like so that each, each person owns their hotel, or they own the childcare center, or is it one landlord? How do you envision that, Ron?
So hold on to that, Ron, because we're going to let Ron clarify some of that, but.
I want to make sure I capture exactly what you're saying.
The loss of.
There's a loss.
Of our.
Of identity.
Painness, our identity, yeah.
Okay, so loss of identity. And then quirkiness, you know, gone.
There could be, there could be a quirkiness loss, but then you also brought up the other item of, is there one versus sort of many?
One landlord, you know, owning, which we have right now, in a way, but it just feels like each little business maybe has more, is there separate buildings? That they could have the potential of having different landlords and different, but when it's one big thing, is it, that's a question that Ron thinks.
Yeah, and so I want to add something here to it. So does this, you know, if there's one versus many, does the one block out potentially folks like, like us, right? I mean, if we want to invest in, in the downtown, does it potentially block out, you know, everyday Nederlands, Nederlands, Nederlands from investing in it?
Yeah, unless they've got many millions.
Right.
What's on doing?
What, some other concerns? Yes, Tom?
This is for the board and the town's finances. When we rip up the downtown, I guarantee you, the infrastructure is a mess, and we're going to have to accelerate our infrastructure development as soon as it's exposed, and so we're going to have to pony up money for that.
Okay, so that's what the fees are going to be, we're going to need them that way.
Infrastructure development.
Costs money.
May need to accelerate.
Okay, we got another.
That, do we even have the capacity right now for this many more units, hotels, bathrooms? And that's piggybacking on Tom, so, okay, do we have to extend?
Structure overload.
Yeah.
So do we have the capacity in our infrastructure? Is that right?
Yeah.
In our infrastructure to sustain this, this world? Okay, great, who's next? Billy, looks like you're moving.
I, I think I've never really seen a precedent of, you know, work I've done of people building housing for developers, contractors, laborers to live long-term, because developers have other projects, and they, they often tie contractors to a project, but they, but it's only for a certain amount of time, then they move them on, and the different trades do different parts of construction, so I, I think that housing, I'm concerned with the thoughts of how the housing would really be used, and then I guess since I'm here, I'll go back to the give and take, like the, the compromise, the concern is, will that occur? And then, I, I guess there's one that I just.
Can I clarify this one just real quick? Concern of how the housing will be used, so it may not fill up initially with the workers.
Well, 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 I mean, I, I think, I think that would be a porch plan, quite honestly. I mean, I'd be renting it out to start generating income personally, and are looking to, you know, start housing the other employees and making housing available, but I, I think, I just don't know that your contractor will actually want that housing, because it might cost, it becomes a cost for them, or else you don't know that the people who come work here for part of a year want to move here. It's just not likely that that's how that's going to happen, and I'm not saying that as an opinion. It's an informed piece of information. So my other concern I've always had is this big hotel, it's kind of one of those build it and they will come things, and I have concerns.
Concern is will it come?
That's the concern.
And Tanya, go for it.
What's the, what's the risk of this being like half finished or not completed? What's the guarantee that when it begins, the finances are in order, and the project will be finished and not left as a giant hole in the middle of town?
Okay, excellent. Billy?
Yeah, and I'll just tell you, that is a concern, because some of the projects I worked on, two went bankrupt, one at the design phase, thank God, and the other one mid-construction, and the city, Salt Lake City was left with this problem.
I, I feel like a lot of these are future state concerns that don't really.
Okay.
Fall in the bucket of logical, real-world, like we know this sort of thing, like, you said it well, Tom, you said truth, like, what's the logical part of this? So one thing that I do want to maybe mention, and I'm not sure if we want to try to consolidate, but it would be nice to trim these down to stuff that we know, like knowns. We can, we can have unknowns and knowns be separated maybe somehow.
That's, that's going to be an opportunity for Ron to clarify in the next piece, if there's, if there's anything on here that is potentially, can require an answer. This is really just to get concerns out, though, because these concerns are likely concerns that are in the rest of the population here.
Absolutely. Then I'm going to add to the concerns that are in the unknown, and that is, we, we possibly don't, at least I haven't seen a marketing plan that would help us secure the proper tenancy for something of this size, to make sure that it's not a big, somebody in town mentioned this, that it could possibly be a big empty shell, or mostly empty shell for a number of years. So I guess that's more of a help us to understand what we don't.
So marketing plan for bringing folks to the, to the occupancy, okay?
For occupancy period.
Okay, what else? Concern, Billy?
So, yeah, I think the marketing plan to this increase occupancy, I think that was a good segue, because one concern I have is just who sets the rates, you know, for, you know, the owner sets the rates ultimately, and we can't control that, but like, who defines affordable? Who defines affordable, and who, who, you know? And then I worry about the kinds of businesses that can forward high commercial rent, when you talk about a marketing plan to increase capacity. If some local people do, but the rent's over their head, we start looking to corporate franchises to fill marketing, and, 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 you know, from a place of changing the, the before and the after, it really is one reality, of the reality of setting rents. And then, and this is just is what it is, but, you know, and is, it's the case now, and someone touched on earlier, but one, one owner, you know, and I think it was Tanya, you talked about, you know, because businesses buy it, buy into their pieces ever, you know, like, would there ever be the opportunity for, for people to, now this is a concern, for people to buy, own? Yeah, I don't know. Actually, my concern is there will be no opportunity for other people to own.
That's, that's the concern.
May not be an opportunity. What else? Just back to the risk of it being half finished. Like, is it going to be a corporation that builds this whole thing with your investors? Are you going to form a corporation? And, and it's the entity that finishes it, is responsible for finishes it, your liability is not in it, per se, the corp, your new corporation, have you already formed that corporation? Or however. Okay, so if I capture it here, how will it be invested in, and then who would take the responsibility for your location? To for completion, okay, who would take? All right, anything else?
Did you mean like, if the corporation set up, who's, who's the torchbearer?
Yeah.
If needed, who's the?
You know, at all costs, can't, can't be love and finish, you know?
Got it. Cool. Jesse, were you making?
I was thinking about it, but I pretty captured it in the last.
You got it captured, okay. What else? Tom, you look pensive, are you going to say something?
No, I'm not going to say anything.
No, okay.
I have one more.
Go for it.
Question, it's more like, well, when is a, it's a question more, is like, which we could, maybe this should be the next session, but
Yep.
Will there be more opportunities for the facade, the skins of the look of these buildings for their, to be, you know, debated upon, public commented, et cetera, et cetera, for Ron's thought.
Okay, be debated, thank you for. And the look and design standards? Be debated. In these pens. What else? Got another one? Go for it.
So my concern, and this gets a little more specific about lot consolidation, so I'm just going to at least add this, this ramp if, if we decide to, but it's, it's the concern of non versus not run, you know, in the future. That's a concern, I mean, and quite honestly, it's a concern even in this discussion, because the torchbearer, Ron versus not Ron, is the concern.
Okay.
There's concerns with both, but, but, they like, you know, there's a concern.
So if I were to capture it, it's, if it's someone else that we're having to deal with besides Ron?
Yeah, yeah, it's the concern of, yeah, of, of that.
Okay.
Are we getting on a line, talking about something we're going to have to adjudicate?
It's not. Lot consolidation is in bounds, yeah, and it's actually will for the benefits of this meeting.
Yeah, we're still good. What else? Yep. Tom, anything?
No.
John, anything?
I have one more, again, the worry about filling it and the expense, and, I mean, the real possibility that we could end up with a lot of chain restaurants that we see all over in this town, which would hurt our businesses that have been loyal and working hard here. So like, I meant something, maybe we can put in a code or something to, that doesn't allow that, but, you know, I don't know. But that, that would really, I think, bother a lot of people to see Subway Sandwich right across from the deli, because they can afford high rents, and, and there'll be so many empty space, there'll be so much real retail, you know, that we're also not sure that we need that much more retail. I mean, there's no, that marketing study would be really helpful.
Yep. Sort of chain retailers.
I have one additional thought too. Well, the first one is that maybe the one group that would love a Subway is the lifties because it's affordable. But the, the thing I was thinking was maybe traffic footprint changes with all the parking being exonerated on those two streets. How to control and manage flow, there would be a real question. I'm sure there's an answer, but I just, I want to throw that out as a possible challenge.
Back to you. John?
I just said that because my son was a liftie.
Tom?
We've got him on the table. How about you?
Let me just do one more. And we're not talking about the concerns with lack consolidation. We're just talking about the product.
We're just talking about the product right now. Yep. Anything else, Billy?
No. I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now now is the opportunity to hear all the concerns that were, you know, brought up. So Ron, you can take as many as you want to clarify any of these things so that, yeah, you have the floor. You have about, you have ten to about 15 minutes. And if it goes longer, that's okay, because we're, we're under time so far.
Okay, let's kind of go as the way that came in. Closing down of businesses. How many businesses closed during the three period, three year period the highway was under construction? Who went out of business? Can anybody tell me who went out of business? Well, that was brought up within the context of making this comment. So that's why I'm asking. I don't know of any, but maybe you do. There was a lot of crying and moaning and particularly by one of my tenants who did suffer, and that was the rock shop. We have an ordinance that says you can only do construction between seven in the morning and seven at night. If you decided to let construction go on during the night, it could probably open the street during the day. But this is a prohibition that is on the books, would have to be discussed. And I think that's at least a partial solution. And again, with a 25 foot setback, the bulk of the construction after the foundations put in would be on the property, wouldn't even be in the street. So why not do it at night? Is that, construction nowadays is far more quiet than it was at, in the times when everybody was hitting the hammer 25 times a second. So there are solutions. It's a good question. And I've done my best to help the business community across the street, given them free parking for three decades and helping them to the perceived detriment of my own tenants. So I'm not, not looking for ways to screw the people across the street. I'm just like everybody else. How do we keep them? How do we help them? What are the ways to? That's one big way. Do things at night when their businesses are not in demand. Okay.
With like lights, is that?
Modern, I'm sorry. Yeah. You'd have, you'd have to have lights, of course, but there's not much area and the, and those things can be shielded. You've seen these great big oil drilling rigs out in eastern Colorado where they have 35 foot high panels. It's all conducted with little air, blocks of noise and blocks of light. They were 24/7. They try. Okay. Nothing's perfect. I really don't want to answer what if questions. Because
Is there a contingency plan for that?
Well, there can be, but I'm real glad you said there's no commitments. If I say something that sounds like a commitment, and then I got in trouble for going to a, a public meeting and saying, thinking that I might have made a commitment. I think I didn't. Other people think I did. You're right. Okay. Impact considerations. I've just discussed that. I think you see that I'm very concerned about it. Loss of identity. I have watched Netherlands change over the 75 years that I've been here with having complete new identities every 15 years. It's new people. It's new things. The question is whether or not the income from this would help your budget to where you could repair the infrastructure. One of the reasons you have bad infrastructure, the water line right in the center of the, of the roundabout blew up during frozen dead guy days. Why was that? Okay. How, where are you going to get the money to fix it? The loss of income from development and every one of these guys who wrote all these books that you see here equates development to helping the financial health of the community. And in no case do they say it ever hurt the community overall. Loss of identity. I, yes, you won't be the same town. I'm not going to say you won't. But the question is, when you get all of a sudden done and we get over this, do the pluses outnumber the minuses? Okay. That's what everybody has to decide. And I'm not necessarily the one to do it at all. Does it block mid?
Does it block mid folk from investing if there's only one investor that owns like the big block?
Shopping centers, every one of them throughout the country are owned by corporations, not by individuals, every one of them. What does that do for the individual proprietor of a business? It allows them to go into business without, without having to put thousands and thousands, maybe even hundreds of thousands of dollars into bricks and mortar, which would totally for them, them from going into business at all. If they didn't have that shopping center, they'd never go into business. Somebody who had the capital, the experience, the knowledge, the education and was willing to take the risk, man, there's a lot of risk here. And I saw that when I started. Okay. I'm taking risk for the town's benefit. Okay. But for my benefit too. And I'm not going to deny that. Of course, nobody does something like this unless they feel they can profit from it. And I don't think profit is a dirty word. Okay. Infrastructure. Well, one of the things about my plans and what I see happening, we have the water go off every so often. We have the electricity go off every so often. Any developer in this environment, in this town where you don't and can't get services until it takes an hour for somebody to get out of Denver is going to plan for that. What are some of my plans? What happens if the water goes off? I'm going to put a $5,000 gallon tank on each of the three buildings. That's 15,000 gallons. What can that be used for? Can be used to run the toilets. So there's an equal water pressure. Been used to service the building if the water goes out. If the, if the water line bursts again right in the middle of town and nobody had water for, I don't know how long it was, but it was right in the middle of frozen dead guy days. Talk about a traffic snarl and job. 20,000 people are in town and the water line shooting up the air like a geyser. That's my problem as much as it is yours. So I would put these water tanks on top. That allows me lots of flexibility. Suppose there's a fire, you connect the thing to a fire hydrant. So if the town supposedly say a fire happens and the water goes out at the same time, good, then you have a source of water for your trucks. Okay. I've thought of that. Actually, I didn't think of it. One of the consultants thought of it. He said, you want to do something for the committee? Help them have a source of water. How about electricity? Power goes off all the time. We've all experienced it. Well, I'm planning on putting reserve generators in these buildings so that if the power goes off, could that help the town conceivably? Suppose it's the middle of the winter and everybody's house is freezing. You're going to need a place where people have a safe haven. Suppose we have another situation where 100 houses get burnt out. Do you, which would be preferable? Have an empty hotel rooms and put them in there, put them in the community center gymnasium on hardwood and floor with just blankets to lie on. These are things that have been thought of. These are things that have been considered. These are things that other people have brought up. Nobody brought it up here, but I'm sure there may be a lot more things like this that come up. So that's my answer to that question. Let's go back to who will own it and why. People who own shopping centers have high level expertise in what they're doing. I have some expertise in assembling land. When somebody comes to me, I don't know anybody else running around town trying to assemble land or even thought about it. So I'm going to bring this up as an answer. Don't target me with legislation because you haven't made your plans and you haven't come up with some of these things years ago. We now have an opportunity to try to work it out together. But I don't want to get blamed for it. Not having the laws in place, not having the procedures in place, not being able to do something because town's such a mess. If you have to deal with somebody other than Ron, it doesn't matter who you're going to deal with. I could be Joe Schmo, I could be anybody and I might die. Just the fact that I'm old now and I got a better chance of doing that than most of you statistically, that could happen to anybody. What do you do? This chap and I both violated the rules. We passed notes to each other just now. And he asked me, what do you do if you're, what's your question again?
What is your, what is your plan for continuity of management for the projects given your age?
Okay. Read my answer.
And the answer have all five things.
The rest of the answer was, I've done this before. This is not my first rodeo. And one of the lenders actually made me agree that no one of the management team would get on the same air flight to the same place at the same time. That was one of their requirements.
Just like the British monarchy.
The president, the vice president, the cabinet. And that's a solid rule.
So do you have people in mind?
Well, so
Of course I have people in mind.
And that'll be the end of it because you're already, you guys already broke the rules, but, but yeah, so that answers the question.
It's the same question, really.
How are we doing on time? Number one. And number two, are we just going to address concerns or does Ron want to talk about?
Speculative stuff? No, I don't want to talk.
No, no, the benefit side of the equation that we did first.
That's, yeah, so we are still good on time. If you want to get to the benefits as well, you could, you could probably wrap up the concern in the next five minutes and then hop over to your, your benefits.
Marketing plan. This is, this is a really good question. How do you do this? Well, first thing, you have to have permission to do it before you could have a marketing plan. Okay. People have to know you can do what you're saying to do. I've had banks, talked to banks, taken this plan that you've looked at today and said, would you be willing to loan out? And they said, yeah, bring us a building permit and then we'll talk to you. Otherwise, don't waste our time. All right. That's the answer to that question. Who defines affordability? This is going to be market rate housing. Everywhere the word affordability has been injected, it means some form of subsidy. Okay. That's the way I define affordability. Somebody can't afford market rate. This is going to cost a certain amount to build, going to have to have a certain return. And if that can't be achieved, there won't be anything affordable in it because there will be no, no one paying for the subsidy. All right. If there's a plan that goes in, that's viable and works, that's okay. I have proffered a plan that I would do. I don't want to do it here and now. I think it's for another meeting because we're just getting started to this. I hope there's a dozen meetings because I want to hear from you. I really do. I heard from a lot of other people. I heard from a lot of highly paid consultants that this town brought here that nobody has paid any attention to yet. So I'd like to revisit some of the things they said because why pay them again? Risk of it being half finished. Well, I have seen projects that got finished and didn't. Three of them have been in nettle. The shopping center went broke the first time it opened. Why? Because it was ill timed. The guy got, went through the process of getting it approved. And then the economy went to the pits, just like 2009. There were no tenants. There were no customers and a bank foreclosed on it. Next guy came along and he thought he was a lot smarter and he went broke too. So finally, it has an owner that has a financial stability to hold it. If it looks to me like this project couldn't make it economically in the environment, I wouldn't do it. I would tell you, hey, wait a minute, folks. We went through all this process and because of the marketing plan, I find out nobody wants to rent it. I'm not going to do it. Now, I really want to answer your questions, but I can't. Okay.
How about this one? And I know you were shaking your head yes, but can the look be debated?
This is a concept. Yeah, the look could be changed. I mean, just bring your ideas. But for crying out loud, just don't reject what I've had highly paid architects plan. Oz architecture has designed entire cities in Nigeria. Okay. I, do I want to have an oil refinery in that one? No. Does, but you know, somebody's acting like I do. I'm very willing. That's a very flexible item in terms of what we do and how we do it. I, I, I don't even have any really preconceived notions. I do have preconceived notions. So I'll tell you about, if you look real carefully on the plan that I showed you, you'll see some elements of the old Antlers Hotel. Anybody know where the Antlers Hotel was? It's right where St. Rita's Church is now. Okay. I can't remember where it is myself, but I know it's hard to see because this is really small. So it's a blown up, really Thank you. Oh, okay. Visible examples of what you want. I'm more concerned, very honestly, than being sure that it functions the way it should. Does it really work for parking? Does it really help circulation? Does it really produce the basic things that I pointed out to you at the very beginning of my presentation? And for instance, I want this parking lane, this aisle for trucks. How about we put the theater facade right in that area? It was really big. It was a great theater. These are some of the play bills that the historical society gave me. Would you like to see that somewhere in the mix? In terms, and then perhaps a, a plaque on the building that tells all about it and this, and it, and you have a recreation of it, but I don't think that one can do two theaters. We have a theater now. It's modern. It's not the kind of structure that you'd want downtown. Now, I don't think, but nevertheless, I liked the facade. I thought it was kind of cute and I'd like to fit it over that tunnel that I want to make for trucks to go through. It's just my idea. If you don't like it, say so. I like hotels. I'm a hotel guy. So I took the one hotel of history in town and tried to incorporate some of the design elements, the scallops on the, on the fence and the little dormer there, the triangular dormer. I think those are kind of neat design elements. If you don't want them, that's okay. I'm not married to them. I don't, my answer to your question is sure, that's highly negotiable. Now, let's see what we can do.
All right. So I think you pretty much got through most of the concerns. If you want, do you want to talk about the pluses?
The pluses? Well, I think I did. I think overall, the pluses will outnumber the negatives. It's just how do we get there? What can we do as a team, the entire, you know, I like team sports. I was really good at team sports when I was in college and it's fun. It, it gives everybody a chance to collaborate, to work out the difficulties, to figure out where the errors are made and try it again, you know? I don't know if I'm making any sense or not, but that's, I'm done answering.
Okay. Well done in terms of timing. All right. So BOT, we have gotten through the agenda. We heard the presentation. We heard the presentation. We heard the pluses. We heard, uh, the minus, you know, there are the concerns. And I think whether, just as an observation, just an observation, if we're looking at either the pluses or the things that we'd like to see done differently, it's potential to, it's potential to say there's a lot of work to still be done.
Going on a limb there. True statement.
True statement, okay? There's still, there's still lots of work to be done, lots of things to discuss, lots of things to think about. And we haven't even gotten to potentially public comment or anything. And, you know, Ron, I appreciate you inviting that, like, folks just telling you. Um, yes, this is segue, um, tip from that public comment. Would, would Ron be open to putting his email or a phone number out for the public to reach out to you regarding this project? Or would you rather go through? No, I'm just curious. Is that something you're open to or not? Okay, and where? Open to, and I would ask that people be, use that well and constructive and.
I mean, I will say this. I really prefer talking to people in person for two reasons. Uh, one is I'm ninety percent deaf, so I have to be near you and be able to read your lips. And the other is, I think it achieves a greater, uh, uh, ability to, uh, communicate together. So, uh, I've had, uh, some real nasty phone calls. Uh, I don't want anymore. Uh, people who are serious about talking to me in a constructive manner, and I don't care if you're totally against me, just don't raise your voice. It hurts my ears.
So, h- how would people reach you? Would you be like somewhere in public on certain days?
Yeah, I could do that. That is what I would prefer. I'd, I'd hold office hours in city halls. Somebody wanted it two hours a day, maybe three days a week.
We could also talk about what it might look like by having some of these facilitated conversations as well, right? Um, that might also be an opportunity. So maybe it's a mix, a yes and.
I, I want one thing clear about this meeting too. I'm the individual who insisted that the public be allowed to come. Initially, it was gonna be a small meeting. I said, no, I want anything I do done in public. And that's why there's not enough seating.
We should see all the folks online as well.
Uh, cover anything on the moratorium?
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, the reality is, um, that is, does what we wrote down is, when we posted this and, and, you know, when we first, and you're right, it was initially gonna be a small conversation, cuz I saw this as a starter. And it seemed, if it was a small conversation between just you, Miranda, one or two trustees and our lawyer, th- then I felt comfortable with it. And partially, it was like to get, give you a chance to start the process of sharing, but also for folks to talk to you about the benefits of the moratorium or the town, as well as for your, yourself and your project in the long term, for the, for the time we need to bring zoning code. It, it, you know, consistent, it was written prior to the account plan of twenty thirteen. Consistent with the account plan of twenty thirteen and envisioned twenty twenty, now twenty thirty. That was, the other part of what I wanted to cover was for those folks. And we talked about folks that get along with you and that you trust to help you consider the value of that. And, you know, and more importantly now, really, all that really matters is I have, we have to work as trustees to get six trustees to, to, to believe in that, so. That's what else, this did evolve, and I still think it's valuable cuz it's the first conversation. But, you know, for the time we have left, if any, I'm, I'm very open to talking about the moratorium.
I will say this too. Is it, there's a place for lawyers. And I insisted that I wouldn't come unless, if the town lawyer was here. This is a discussion between me, the board of trustees, the public. And my own lawyers just get in my way sometimes. They make me mad with the, an issue that they grind into without being able to look at the entire concept and be either somewhat positive or somewhat negative. And I don't know if anybody's opinion has been changed tonight. But at least I'm willing to talk to you. I just want you to be willing to talk to me. So I'll be glad to set up maybe six hours a week. Be in town hall. Anybody wants to come in? Great.
No room there.
Here.
Yeah. Oh, well, I'll say regarding the moratorium, but I still am worried about the lot consolidations because it seems like this project is so far off into the future. Um, I've been hearing and talking about this hotel since nineteen ninety-six, seven, I don't know. And I, as mu- as much as I personally do like this plan for all the pros that we have on here, I'm worried, um, about the lot consolidation because it, it limits, um, what we were saying here, Ned folks, from purchasing these lots. It becomes a corporate only sort of thing should this project never happen. And I still have that concern. Um, I, I wish you were telling me you were starting this next year, you know?
I would if it looked like we're not gonna have a nuclear war. You know, I would if I felt I had the community solidly behind me, that they felt that what I was proposing was part of what they were proposing to. It is. This has been, this project has been through many hearings, many charrettes, many public, uh, 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 meetings, open houses. Uh, and, uh, now, time has passed. And a lot of people who are here don't know anything about that history. And I understand why. And I'm understa- and I'm willing to go through it again. But I can tell you that I am not willing, and I'll put it right on the line. We said no commitments here, but this is a no commitment statement. It can't be done unless somebody takes a leader pos- leadership position, leads it forward. And it doesn't matter if it's me or somebody else, but I can tell you a committee of owners won't do it. And I can also tell you there's very few people in Neto that could put up two or three million dollars to buy a chunk of it. Right now, the appraisals I have, all of that property together is worth about thirty-five million dollars. If there's somebody here in town that's interested in investing, I'm interested in talking. But you have to, and I have to convince you of the realities of the financial, uh, environment that will create something that will work for all of us. And by doing that, Tanya, uh, I can't do it. And I'm not willing to try to do it because I've spent a lot of years and a lot of money putting it together as one piece. The lot consolidation thing or the dissolution of lot lines is just a small thing. It's, it's a sales, it's part of the sales program. I mean, and I don't know how I could explain to people that these things, whoever said sequence is, uh, hit the nail right on the head. It can't all be done at once. This is lot dissolution lines is just one of the small elements of sequencing the entire thing. No, it's gonna be done overnight. You can't do something like this, uh, a- and it's gonna take a period of years. I think Billy's probably right in terms of his estimate, and it's not three or four years, it's four or five. Okay? I tend to agree with him on that. But nevertheless, I want and feel that if the community isn't really solidly behind this, that will make it not work. That in and of itself is enough discouragement for me to say, yeah, I'm gonna pass on and let somebody else do it.
So, and thank you. Having worked with private equity, uh, I can assure you, the first question they ask, there's plenty of capital. But the first thing they ask is, is the, is the community a hundred percent in alignment? If not, we're not putting money in. And that everybody, that's generally how things are done.
Okay, last closing.
So, yeah, thanks for your time and, um, and given the last few things, especially that were said, and the fact that, you know, that piece of property is worth, you know, thirty-two million and, and, you know, and once consolidated, it, that price is more locked in. Um, I am just asking everyone here to encourage your trustees, encourage your mayor, encourage Ron Mitchell, encourage all of us to under, to extend the moratorium and give us time to do this right.
So, Mayor, do you wanna talk about next steps in the moratorium?
The next step is that next Tuesday, we have a meeting. It's an action night, and the moratorium ends at that time. The options before us will be to end it or to extend it. We need six votes, three-quarter majorities, five and a quarter, we gotta round up. Um, six votes out of seven to, to vote to extend. I think we need just majority to do, well, to end, we just don't extend it ends. And then, I'm just thinking, random, looking at you, if I'm forgetting about.
We need to extend an emergency moratorium, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the only way to do that is with six votes. And the main thing is, if people are understanding, I'm the one who put that thing on the docket back in January, when, you know, um, and it was really, but I just, we need timeout. We need a timeout to do this right. To bring things to go consistent with the comp plan in vision twenty thirty. That's my take on it.
One last comment.
Yeah, I do wanna comment. We have one person over here saying, how fast can you do it? Can you get it done? And we have another saying, no, wait, we gotta stop for six months. Which is it? Which is it? This thing has been in the mill. I'm sure that ninety percent of the people here know about this or know something about this. Uh, and I don't see why you can't get going on it. One person wants it going. One person right here, Tanya, would like to see me do it in two years. Not possible. The mayor says four to five years, probably closer to the reality. But that also means five years and six months. If you extend the moratorium.
So it's in there. I think we can all agree, there's probably still some conversation, some work to do. Ron, thank you for being open to doing this presentation. Appreciate it.
Supporting trustees, appreciate your willingness to dig into it a little bit and surface some. There's been a lot of, I think, the rumor mill about Ron's plan over the years. Every time somebody talks about it, I always ask, did you have, have you seen the plans? Have you looked at it? Do you know what it looks like? Right? And so I appreciate you bringing these thing, um, the documents as well, so that we could kinda get visceral with it, so that folks can put in and take a look at it. Um, everyone, please jot down your questions, write to us. Um, and yes, please turn back in, uh, all of the, the, uh, the presentations.
Thank you, Nicole, for keeping us on track.
Yep, please bring in all the books. Thank you, everyone.